We said. Can we start? All set? Good afternoon and welcome to the September ninth, twenty twenty five ETAC meeting. Recording Secretary is the meeting being recorded.
The meeting is being recorded.
Thank you. My name is Mark McLaughlin. I am Chair of the Environmental Transportation Advisory Commission. I would like to call on this ECAT meeting of September ninth, twenty twenty five to order at four, four oh four. We have six items on the agenda. Recording Secretary, please call roll and advise if any Commissioner will request for an excused absence or to remote participation due to invoking their emergency provision, physical, physical absence. Chair, Recording Secretary, please call roll.
Chair McLaughlin?
Aye.
Vice Chair Baissa?
Present.
I see that Commissioner Alvarado has not arrived yet. Commissioner Cheney?
Present.
Commissioner Klein?
Here.
Commissioner? I see that she's not arrived yet. Commissioner Vadori?
Here.
You do have a quorum.
Thank you. Would Commissioner Adori lead us in the pledge allegiance?
To say Adori? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Recording Secretary, please describe the way the public can access this virtual meeting.
This meeting is being livestreamed on the City of Santa Ana portal. If anyone would like to provide a public comment, they may do so in person or on the City of Santa Ana portal The opportunity to speak is going to follow the next comment. If you wish to speak, please select the Zoom icon to let us know if you would like to speak. You will be called upon by the name you entered. If any members of the public are present at this in-person meeting, please be sure you have completed a speaker card and then hand it to me. Speakers will be allocated three minutes to speak. We will notify speakers when the time is up.
Thank you, Lori. Do we have any speakers for this evening?
There are, there is one speaker.
Okay.
It is time for the public speaker, Janelle McLaughlin, to speak.
Good afternoon. Mr. McLaughlin. Mark and I have been involved in the GBRH for over fifteen years and I was on ETAC with many a few for about eight years. But today we're going on trees and I just want to compliment that role on his team because we started up a bunch of trees and over the last five years spending in Utah. Okay, okay. Here's the question now. We went after a plan to do the banks of the median with foliage, drought tolerant, it's a crawling foliage, any kind of drought tolerant. There's a space that I've been bringing up for almost five years and the reason it's very important is like about four fifty memory lane, which is right in front of Towne Country, right in front of Hard Park. It is the entrance to Santa Ana. And that's what we've tried to work on is that people coming to visit us to use our wonderful restaurants coming into rent houses or buy houses, they come in the arteries. In that particular area, there is dirt down there at the median and it was on schedule quite a few years ago to have some drought tolerant plantings there. And I know we've had a lot of budget cuts, but over five years we've been able to get a few plants there budget to enhance the influence to our beloved city that we call home.
Any other public comments at this time?
No, not at this time.
Okay. Moving on to public comments and on the agenda items and non-agenda items. Recording Secretary, does anyone wish to speak? Sorry, at this time we're ready to vote on the consent calendar. Is there a motion or a second to approve the consent calendar?
I motion to approve.
A second, the motion?
Recording Secretary, please do a roll call.
Chair McLaughlin?
Aye.
Vice Chair Baissa?
Aye.
Commissioner Cheney?
Aye.
Commissioner Klein?
Aye.
Commissioner Vadori? The motion to approve the consent calendar passed by a vote of five zero with no, with two absences. The motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the business calendar, item number four, public realm plans. This is an informal discussion. Siri Champion, Senior Planner, Senior Planner and Monica Suter from the Public Works from the planning and building side of the agency. Moving on to the business calendar, number five or four, sorry, my bad, jumped.
Siri Champion, a senior planner with the city's Planning and Building Agency will present the item and Monica Suter as well, from Public Works as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, ETAC. Nice to see many of you that I've seen before and for those I haven't met yet, nice to meet you. My name is Monica Suter and we are pleased today to be here in partnership with our planning folks from Planning and Building Agency to speak about the public realms. We have co-presenters, myself, Monica Suter, and I head up the Development Engineering Services Division for the city under the Engineering Services Division for Public Works. Siri Champion is the senior planner and Rogelio Puerta is with Tori?
Tori Gallis.
Tori Gallis and partners. I want to say it right, okay. And we also have been working very closely with our traffic engineering team and Zed is here along with his staff have also been here and so we're very pleased to co-present this today. All right. Let's see here. So this is the public realms, okay? And this picture sort of gives you a nice feeling of what on earth is, what do you mean when we say public realm? So, for example, you see all the activity in the public space there and people moving about, right? And so here we go. So what on earth is a public realm? A public realm is the area between the building facades on either side of the street. It includes, it includes the vehicular lanes, bike ways, sidewalks, parkways, seating areas, parks and plazas within the public right of way. And it also includes the privately owned areas that are open to the public. So that's important to distinguish. Well, what are the public realm plans? Those are documents that establish the character and requirements for improvements, in this case for five focus areas, that guides the, the design and construction of both the private and public improvements. You can see from this graphic that the public realm area there is shaded in the blue is basically the, the visual of what a public, what the public realm is. And all of this is an implementation action of the general plan. So we talked about five focus areas. Here are the five focus areas. South Main Street. We have Grand Avenue and Seventeenth Street, West Santa Ana Boulevard, the fifty-five freeway and Dire Road, South Bristol Street. And those are the five areas of this focus. So the purpose of the five areas is to promote responsible growth. We want to foster investment and create mixed-use environments to live, work and play. We want to support transit and non-motorized travel, create and improve public outdoor open spaces, engage pedestrians. We want to soften the engines, edges and make smooth transitions and enhance intersections. And you can see the visuals there. Another really important element of the public realm plans is setting developers' expectations. People want to come here and redevelop? Well, what are our requirements going to be? So the public realm plans will help inform private developers as to what is expected from them with regard to the setbacks, the streets, streets, streetscape contributions, landscape and open spaces. And it creates a plan for a more livable, sustainable, inclusive and economically vibrant city. So you can see in this graphic here, this drawing or photo really, is that you have the public sector area, what's going to be designed and built there. And then you have the private sector area beyond it, but all of it is open to the public. And again, another good visual. The scope of the public realm plans basically includes this area as we talked about. And you can see it more zoomed in on this graphic. And the public plan, a public realm elements include the elements that you see in these pictures. And also it basically creates what we would sort of refer to as a vibe through the following elements. What the character of the sidewalks are, how wide are they, what materials they're made of, the color schemes, the vehicle lanes, the bicycle lanes, intersections, parkways, parks and plazas, gateways, landscaping, bus stops, furniture and seating areas, et cetera. So these give you some examples. Here's, there, here are some other improvements in the public realm. Shaded sidewalks, street, street fronting, the green space, retail plaza with outdoor dining, bicycle and pedestrian amenities, protected bike ways. So the health and wellness can be improved based on how we handle these areas. And these are places that encourage walking, biking and transit along with community interaction. It creates a civic culture. More examples of improvements include this mixed-use zoning, complete streets with bicycle lanes, bike ways, along with vehicular lanes and also serving transit, stormwater management. You can see some of that, the bioswells like you see on Bristol. And these create economic opportunities for a sustainable future. And it's also the infrastructure to support development opportunities and equitable investment. Now going to hand it over to Siri, who is going to wrap up the presentation.
Thank you, Monica, and good afternoon, all of you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak again and the partnership that we have with Public Works on this project. The public realms plans have two precedents in the city. One of those precedents is called the Harbor Boulevard Streetscape Plan. And we wanted to share a couple of examples with you because these are documents that are already being used to inform developers of what expected of them when they come in and do new projects. In addition, these guide the types of improvements that the city does whenever the city takes on a project. So here you can see an example, one of the components of a public realm plan is to have a typical cross-section of what that street would look like, consistent with the general plan mobility element, but adding more details to it so we can see what a street cross-section would look like as it is redeveloped in the future. On the right-hand side, you can see some additional elements to a public realm plan where there are specifications for the types of paving that could put into place, the different components of the, the street cross-section and what they would look like. Another precedent that we have is the, the MIMU Public Realm Amenity Plan. This is another example where we have specifications for street trees, street furniture and a variety of other improvements that help to enhance the pedestrian and bicyclist experience that complements the vehicular right-of-way and the transit that, that travels there on as well. Did I say trees? So on the left-hand side, you can see there's a diagram that shows different types of trees and where they're to be planted. And on the right-hand side, you can see again a cross-section of what the streets would look like. So there are four different elements that we're focused on in these public realms plans for the five focus areas. First is streets, second is sidewalks and parkways, third is gateways and fourth is public plazas. So streets have specific tactics that make Santa Ana's streets more pedestrian and cyclist friendly. They integrate public transit stations and they seamless, and they integrate public transit stations seamlessly into the public spaces and provide safe routes for, for people to travel. You can see an example of this cross-section within the public realm of, this was developed for one of the focus areas. And you can see there the street travel lanes, you can see the median, you can see the parkway next to the bike lane and you can see the street trees and then the shaded sidewalks that are along the street. On the right-hand side, you can see the private improvements, including outdoor seating areas. So this is all part of the public realm. For sidewalks and parkways, we have walking trails and permeable pavement, rain gardens and other solutions that can minimize the heat island effect. It helps to manage stormwater and offer community economic and health benefits. Here's a rendering that shows what an improvement on a new development could look like, where you've got the screen open space, you've got sidewalks that are comfortable for pedestrians and you've got stormwater improvements as well. At gateways into these focus areas, we can have a wide variety of improvements that help you know you've arrived and help create that vibe that Monica talked about at the beginning. At these gateways, we can incorporate public art. We can have celebrations like we do currently in the downtown in some of our public realm areas. And through those places, we can have recreational activities and celebrations for what Santa Ana is. And then lastly, we have public plazas. Public plazas provide high-quality public spaces that ensure positive benefits to businesses, good experiences for children and seniors who need more accessibility infrastructure, people with disabilities as well and then underserved communities. In terms of where we are in the project, right now, we're in the middle of developing the plans. We're starting to go to committees like the ETAC in order to gather some feedback about the concepts and what your experiences are of the city today and where you'd like to see us go in the future, especially in thinking about what's happened on Harbor Boulevard through the Streetscape Plan as well as the mixed-use areas that are included in the public realm plan that I shared with you earlier. The next step is to then incorporate that feedback, revise the plans and then move it forward on to adoption. If you have any questions, we're happy to take them today, but also we're happy to take them as a follow-up to this meeting. Monica is the primary contact for Public Works and I'm the primary contact for planning. We also have a project website where you can learn more about the, the efforts there, included at the end of the presentation. So with that, we'll conclude and we're happy to take any questions that you might have. As mentioned at the beginning, we have Tori Gallis here represented by Rogelio. So if you have any questions, you can pose them. The more technical questions will defer to Rogelio and the other questions Monica and I are happy to answer.
Okay, thank you, Siri. Thank you, Monica. Does anyone have a question for the presenters?
So you are like, for example, in Ward Four, we have a related project that's coming in. So you're the team that's going to be working with Related to make sure that the, these projects flow smoothly?
So Related Bristol is a specific plan and as part of the specific plan, there is a component that talks about the design of the public realm within that specific plan area. For this project, we're focused on West Santa Ana Boulevard, South Main, South Bristol, Grand and Seventeenth and then the Dire fifty-five freeway.
But South Bristol would fall in with Related, what is that?
South Bristol does include that small area that is Related Bristol, yes. So that's kind of a precedent-setting development for other parts of South Bristol.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Alvarado. I got a couple of questions. You mentioned that this is going to be, you know, when, when the developer comes out to the city to do this. Have you spoken to developers or surveyed developers? And what is your feedback with these, with these plans?
We have not approached developers with this. It's a very typical type of project that you present to developers when they come in to do a project. Developers tend to just want to know what the city wants. And this is intended to give them clear direction for what kinds of improvements are expected of developers. And it gets into more detail. So the general plan establishes the cross-sections for the streets. And this goes into more detail about what specific types of pavement we need, what types of street furniture is necessary, how the private property interplays with the public property and that type of thing.
Are any of the surrounding cities doing something similar to this?
I don't know of specific projects, but like I said, this is typical of all different areas. Oftentimes, this type of project is addressed through a specific plan like the Related Bristol Plan. But in the city, we've added these on the, to the focus areas as well. The focus area direction from the general plan was to incorporate them into the zoning code and then to do these public realm improvements or not public realm improvements, but public realm plans, independent of a specific plan.
The, the focus areas that are mentioned here, I'll just take an example, South Main or the Main Street examples. Do we see any development coming into that area? I don't see where the public realms have a space. So I, I don't, I, I know that area pretty well. I don't see where the public, the public realms space would be coming in as I don't see any developments coming in or anything like that coming into that. So the other area that I, that I know well is the fifty-five slash Dire Road. There is a brand-new development there that's residential. Everything else seems to be commercial. There might be another development on the corner of Alton and, and what is that, Red Hill? That there's one community there and then there's the new one that's on Warner and Red Hill. Everything else seems to be commercial and industrial. So I don't see how the, how we chose that area for this public realm if there's not really any residential space there. It's all industrial and manufacturing. I don't know if you can speak to that or if it's way, it's a little bit too early for that.
Absolutely. I'd be happy to. So the general plan is a long-term vision for the city, a forty, forty-five year vision for the city. And through a seven-year process, the city engaged with community members, excuse me, and stakeholders to look at where there's appropriate places in the city for development. The goal is to retain the character of about seventy, seventy-five percent of the city, which is largely single-family residential and existing, existing development that we don't want to see changed. So when it comes to the addition of new businesses, new industry, new housing, the desire of the community as adopted in the general plan is for development to focus in these five areas. And you're absolutely right. There are constraints to these different areas and they're very different in nature. South Main is a very tight-knit area, small lots, smaller lots, smaller street widths. So the nature of the public realm in those areas are going to be different than in other areas. The fifty-five Dire area has a vision for intense development, dense development, where the industrial areas will get probably bigger and, and not heavier. That's not the right word for it because it's not heavy industrial, but taller buildings and more jobs concentrated in those areas accompanied by a district center called, a, a zone called District Center, which is intended for mixed-use housing and retail and commercial. So the public realm in that area is going to look much different than it does in South Main. And we have more redevelopment potential in larger areas where that industrial starts to transition over time into other uses, which are opened up through the zoning code and the, the new permitted uses that are available there.
You mentioned that this was a, is a seven-year plan or you, or we're coming into the seventh year or?
No, the general plan was adopted in twenty twenty-two and the planning process was a seven-year planning process that included public engagement throughout.
Does this plan at all look into the issue that's coming in with, with Measure X and that sunsetting? Have you, has, has that taken into effect? I love the idea. I love the, 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 the green. I guess the greenery out here. We know that that's an extra, extra expense than just having concrete and cement. If we were to start implementing these things and now the city has to go out there and maintain them in five years, are we going to have that budget for five years? And if we don't, will the plan have wording or something to say, hey, we can't maintain this because we no longer are generating that revenue with the city because we haven't found a Measure X replacement for those funds? Like, is there a contingency, I guess, for the lack of budget to maintain this?
That, that's a very fair point and fair question and we, we understand that. And that's one of the reasons why we have this document. Good to see you, by the way. Because we want to make sure that when developers come to build in Santa Ana, that they already kind of know what to expect, right? And also that we have amenities that are going to encourage more responsible growth development, which will help with the bottom line essentially because of the sunsetting of Measure X. This is, development is incredibly important to the city as everybody here well knows. And so we take this all very seriously. And to an earlier question you had in terms of the, you know, how much spacer is with these kinds of, similar to a specific plan when we have this public realms plan is all finished up and, and in place, essentially developers come in certain areas. They have to then dedicate, dedicate, I'm sorry, a percentage of, or a portion of their property to the city, for example. But often, like with Related, they'll maintain and they want to maintain. A lot of, so we'll do agreements with them for maintenance agreements so that they'll actually maintain a good part of the property because they want to make sure it looks nice too. Because we know maintenance budgets don't increase over time, right? The number of things that people won't maintain increases. Everything from bike lanes to, you know, nice amenities and furnitures and more expensive lighting and those kinds of things. And we want all these things because it helps the character of the city, right? So, yeah, so because of that, we, we look forward to those maintenance agreements. In working with like South Coast Plaza, I'm sorry, Seagerstrom and Sons, you know, who did South Coast Plazas over there on Lake Center Drive, for example, they are very, they want to make sure that the they want to make sure that the vibe they have in front of their property is really nice. So they want to actually maintain and have the purview to make sure it's nice in front of their property. So we have a lot of these bigger developers that want to do that, which is good because that's something we've been thinking about in terms of making sure that Pedro's group and maintenance, you know, isn't getting hit with all these beautiful things we want to maintain. Make sure are maintained, but maybe we aren't going to be the ones to maintain it. We're going to try to do those agreements wherever we can. I just wanted to kind of respond to that.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And I I know you guys are not the policymakers. And I don't, I don't want you guys to answer this. I just, there's a one for the record is I guess this plan, I hope that this plan balances the fact that not every developer is Seagerstrom and Sons, right? And those areas that are being developed, you see the residential units that are being up put up either for sale for rent, they're market, right? They're not the low income, which is what the majority of city council is. You know, on paper is what they're saying. They want the low income, right? And so I'm for a balance. And I'm hoping that this does bring in the developers and doesn't push them away to other cities surrounding us where it is easier to to do it and we're not fighting, you know, how many low income units versus how many market rent units? Because on paper, this is amazing. At the same time, our residents don't care for market rent units right now. And I don't think the leadership in city council is caring for the market rents. They want to push low income. Whether that changes within the next elections and so a new leadership comes in, I hope that this plan is flexible enough to to deal with that with those changes. Again, it's going to be a financial change and it might be a leadership change. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
When it says South Bristol, does that also because Related is going to be a big project? It's Bristol, it's MacArthur, and it's Plaza. So it says South Bristol, is that going to cover all those streets? And also another question too, money, is this something, because I know that the city is getting about twenty two million for Related. Is that some, is some of that money going to be used for the public streets?
Yes, so think of the Related Bristol as kind of it already went forward almost like a specific plan in a sense, right? Or as a specific plan. So it's already setting the stage for what's happening right there.
Okay.
In the public right away, in the public realm. So while we're doing this plan that doesn't include that, it's not going to trump that, if that makes sense, because we can't. It's already ahead of it. Does that make sense? So whatever is in that area specifically, we're going to have to be careful not to contradict anything that's already been approved.
Yeah. Yeah, and the the drawings do remind me a lot of the stuff that I seen with Related because they have beautiful drawings.
Exactly. Thank you. Good comment.
Lawrence.
Hi, this is Larry Klein. Your renderings look beautiful. But but I'm wondering how realistic they are. Will a developer just want to stick to three and four story buildings? I, in a mixed use area, I would think they'd want five or six to maximize their income and those buildings wouldn't look as good in the public realm. Well, you know, so my question is, what can you do to help to enforce that builders don't overbuild in a given area?
So part of the reason why this is a relationship between the Planning and Building Agency and Public Works is because this project of public realms is at the interface between public to private development and the public infrastructure. And so you raise a really good point. And the development that happens on the private property is in terms of the buildings and the setbacks is determined by the zoning code. And so the zoning code can be written in such a way and is proposed in such a way that we can step back the buildings. So they might be able to go five stories, but they don't go five stories right on the property line. They have to be set back a distance from the sidewalk and they need to be stepped back as you move up higher, the number of stories. And the idea there is to have a positive pedestrian experience. You want the scale of the buildings to be comfortable for a pedestrian.
What if the builder wants to ask for a variance from the code?
They're welcome to ask for a variance. The question is whether or not it would be supported. So staff needs to make a recommendation to the planning commission and then the planning commission needs to make an ultimate decision on a variance. And a variance requires a hardship of some kind. So it's very difficult to argue that you have a hardship that prevents you from enjoying a right that all other property owners can enjoy on that same block. So variance in your example, I've never seen one like it in my career.
I have another question. Related going to be on one side of the street across the street from Bristol, are they going to do any improvements to that street? Because you're going to go down Bristol and see this beautiful project. And then on the other side, is there going to be any investment done on the other side of Bristol?
So the idea behind the five focus areas that came out of the general plan is to promote investment.
Okay.
The city has no control over what might come in over time. And at this point, I don't know of any specific projects that are proposed. But the intent is to promote development in the whole area.
You mentioned something right now that we, the general plan was seven years ago. So these areas were selected seven years ago?
No, it's adopted in twenty twenty two.
Okay, so it's three years ago is when the plan, so these areas were adopted three years ago. Are these areas still the areas that we need to focus or we're just going with it because now we're knee deep in it?
Well, it's a forty five year plan that was adopted by city council with the vision being a forty five year plan.
When was that adopted by city council? What year?
Twenty twenty two.
Okay, so the plan was adopted by city council seven years ago. This, these areas were looked on three years ago.
No, the opposite.
The areas in 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 focus were seven years ago.
The areas that were focused on were adopted in twenty twenty two.
So seven years ago, okay. No, sorry, three years ago, okay.
Through a seven year process.
Through a seven year process, okay. Well, I'm asking is is, are there other areas that this team might want to focus on or we're sticking to these?
In terms of public realms, this is the focus right now. But we have the two existing plans for other areas and there are other places in the city where development is possible. The five focus areas is where the the committee of stakeholders and the stakeholders who participated in the process wanted to see the most investment in the near term.
That was three years ago.
Adopted three years ago.
The the company you made, the stakeholders, and they adopted those areas. That was three years ago. That they adopted, or was that seven years ago?
City council adopted it three years ago, following a seven year process.
Okay.
Right. Yeah, that's, that's about the time before the, before the change made or it was approved. The improvement, the improving, oh, sorry. Improving and approving the general plan, I believe, was seven years ago?
No, the general plan was adopted in twenty twenty two, three years ago.
Great.
And they they spent seven years through the planning process.
Right. Well aware of that.
Okay, yeah, you were involved.
I was, I was on the commission, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. One thing, we talked about the architecture and the streets and everything else. One thing that if you go back to the Harbor Corridor, that was designed with small setbacks. And it was designed to have very little pedestrian in the front and to keep things in order and clean and everything else. With these larger setbacks, are we going to start to see homeless people kind of creeping into that area every day? Because it's open, there are open spaces. What if, what's the city going to do to manage that aspect?
Chair, if I can, if I can piggyback on that.
No, you can't.
The plant, like these rounds, like I said, it looks great. I love it. What is the data behind it on why we're doing it like this?
Right.
And what is, what is the data behind its success? And if we don't have it, then what is our measure of success?
So in terms of the homeless issue first, there are designed approaches called SEPTED and I'm gonna slip up on that acronym. Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. Is that right? Yes, thank you. So there are ways through design that we can discourage homeless activity and other antisocial behavior. In terms of addressing homelessness, if we see it occur, then there are programs through the city that would need to address the issues once they have occurred.
Okay, is there anything considering with regards to the the, lost my train of thought there, but the whole, the the large exit, the large development projects that we've had recently on First, on First Street. And, right? And and so there was, there's a lot of controversy on that one because that was considered low, low income housing or supported by low income housing. And it's really gone down significantly since it was completed. And again, how do we avoid that situation?
I'm not sure that I'm following. How do we avoid a situation of denigration of the?
Are these, are these areas that are being identified having, going to have high density housing along with other types of housing?
That is what's adopted in the general plan, yes.
Okay.
Chair, so I guess what, maybe what the chair is trying to say is oh, for the, for the developments that happen along First, let's say along First and the Fifty Five, First and and Grand, were, were the plans for those and the sites and were they similar to this? Because if they were, we see that there's an issue with that, with those now. What is the difference between what happened then and with these plans? What, what's the difference? And assure ourselves that that's not going to happen again. And if we, if we don't know, because you guys didn't work on it before, then that's something we want to know. Because again, if we can build the most beautiful buildings and and we see what happened there along First Street.
And then we can get some description.
Yeah, I mean, I I've heard council comments about First Street and that kind of thing. Yeah, so I, go ahead, go for it.
Good evening, Chair Commissioners, Rudy Rosas, Acting Public Works Director. I think if I may refocus, and and they're great questions, but in terms of what the public realm plan was being presented today is trying to get through what that public space will look and feel like. And there's been great questions, great dialogue on, for example, how the Bristol Related project sets the table for some of these areas. I think the question I'm hearing right now is how do we prevent, let's say, the concentration of affordable housing and the senior or assisted living facilities so that the developments that actually come in are of, you know, high quality and this and that. And I think it's a slightly different discussion than what the team is prepared to discuss right now in terms of the public realm plan, where this is setting the table of what that experience that a pedestrian bicyclist is going to feel versus the individually approved projects that go through the planning commission process or or have certain maybe credits or what have you from the state in terms of affordable housing, these kinds of things. And while there are great questions, I don't know that that's something this team right here can.
That's absolutely fair. I think for us, it's, we, like I said, we love this, we like how it looks. Have we, I guess the point would be, have we learned from what we did in the past? And is, and and these plans, have they taken that into consideration? And if they haven't, can we, can we take that into consideration? And come back to us to let us know?
I think one thing that would be incredibly helpful for the team is to hear some specific examples of concerns that have come up within the public realm. So homelessness is one thing that we have taken note of and the importance of that crime prevention through environmental design. Trash. What are some other examples of things? The safety of a pedestrian given X, Y, Z. Your feedback on that kind of thing is helpful.
Parking is a big issue and because that's one, the big, the large apartment building on First Street, that was underparked to begin with. And now it's underparked significantly because of having five or 10 people living in an apartment.
And I think the request from from this commission is that this team go back and speak to the PD, the Quality Alive team, speak to the other departments that are dealing with the issues now. It might be even Public Works is dealing with that. I know CDA is dealing with that. And so part of the research and the, I guess, the public outreach should also include the issues that we're facing now.
Right.
With the other agencies and not, hey, we we have a great plan, but we didn't consult with anybody else. And I think that's what has led to the issues with the city and the developments that we had now where everything is in a vacuum. And we don't see that working together with other teams and other and other departments.
Great points. And I want to add one thing too. I think one of the things that really helps encourage the character that you see in some of these vibrant pictures where there's a lot of goings on, there are a lot of people, there are a lot of amenities and this kind of thing, is when you have live space versus dead space, right? So where you have sort of more dead space and it's an area that people don't really want to hang out and be at and it doesn't have good lighting, that's when you get more of these adverse conditions. So having that pedestrian friendly lighting, having outdoor dining, having amenities and having activity in and of itself can help thwart a lot of these issues. So I I think excellent points. San Ana has been dealing with a lot of that. I think when the streetcar comes online soon, you know, that's also going to create a vibrancy again too that will help with all these issues. Great points and comments and and your points have been taken. Thank you.
Thank you, Monica. Go ahead.
Commissioner Abaysa, thank you so much for your presentation. I really liked seeing all the images of the possible improvements. I wanted to mention something about the streetcar. I think a concern that is really important is connectivity in Santa Ana. For example, the streetcar, I believe it leads you to the train station. But I don't think bicycles are allowed in the train station, like you wouldn't be able to park your bike anywhere. I understand the train station isn't part of the areas that were discussed in the presentation, but just as an example, that amenities would be helpful and to keep connectivity in mind. And then when these expectations are being set and communicated to developers, are they going to have like options to select from these amenities or is it going to be like it looks in this picture, like where you have bike lanes, outdoor furniture, permeable sidewalks, or are they just going to be able to pick like, oh, I want to add a bike lane? And that's it.
So each area in the focus areas will have certain requirements and perhaps some options. That hasn't all been fleshed out yet. We're at the earlier stages of this process. So this is, your points are taken to make sure that we have maybe a little bit of both that fit in the palette of choices that they have.
Yeah, thank you, because I understand some areas are high dense areas where there's more walkability. But just to keep in mind, like having shade at bus stops is really important. I'm not a huge fan of crime prevention through environmental design because I don't believe that's an actual solution for the problem. I think the problem is a lot bigger. But when you implement that, you end up just with like a bus stop sign versus like an actual bench with shade. And that's really important during hot weather because a lot of people do walk or kids go to school and they end up getting wet when it rains. So yeah, just to keep that in mind. And then my last comment was, I don't know if this is a possibility, but if a skate park could be thrown in there, I know there was one that just opened up by Native Sun in downtown. And I think having that in like a small area helps improve the active transportation in the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may, two items to bring forward, Commissioner Chaney here. So to build
So to build off of Commissioner Baez's last comment, one of the things I was thinking about during your presentation was a lot of these corridors are focused around, you know, what I would see as like financial districts, like Main Street is a lot of shopping. And a lot of these attractions would be, you know, great for the city. You have a nicer area for people to come in and to shop. But on the end of the residence, these areas don't have a lot of free or low cost activities to bring the residents in to enjoy these spaces. And that is financially prohibitive for a lot of our city, especially given the recent financial hardships that the entire country is feeling. So I would encourage that to be a consideration, you know? Commissioner Baez's suggestion of a skate park is one example of a, you know, free activity for kids to go and do along these corridors. And I would like to see, you know, more options like that because, you know, as much as I love the downtown area, if I'm not going down there to eat or to shop, the library is closed, you know, what, what is available for me to do in that area? Not a lot. So that is one consideration I would like to throw out there. My second consideration, when we were talking about the sidewalks and parkways, you know, I love that you guys included the, you know, consideration for the heat island effect. Love it. Absolutely. One thing that I never seem to see with these plans though is landscaping to reduce air pollution in the area. I never see that taken into consideration. You know, Sacramento's air quality district, they have a wonderful document, the guideline for, or landscaping guidance for reducing air pollution along roadways. And they base that off of EPA guidelines. And, you know, that being Sacramento, being close to us, some of those considerations could be taken into, you know, our planning, especially along major, major thoroughfares like Bristol Street, that's a high traffic area. If we want people to spend time outside there, we should also take into consideration the air quality. We have a lot of cars going by there. I don't personally want to be breathing in that air pollution all day. Santa Ana does not have good air quality. We could be taking this into consideration when we're making plans for the future and put that into requirements for future developments. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yes, there, most friends still make. Commissioner Reno, so thank you so much for your presentation and the pictures. Kind of to piggyback on the other commissioners, I noticed that you're trying to create more open space for play. But I didn't see it too much in the pictures, so I was wondering what that entails. I like the idea of a skate park, but also something more that's play for like younger children. So I'd like to know more in details what ideas you had for that. And the same with the landscaping, what Commissioner Chaney said about the air pollution and being more intentional with what we do with our landscape design, I think is very important and also including native plants when we're changing that landscaping. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Again, Monica Siri, thank you very much for the presentation. Moving on to the business calendar, item number five, Street Trees Service Program Update. This item is an informational item. Arturo Rodriguez, Assistant Public Works Maintenance Manager, will be presenting on this item.